Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees meeting for March 21st, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Deambrosio?
Here.
Trustee Moser? Not here yet. Trustee Pechalakoff?
Here.
Trustee Thorp?
Here.
Trustee Watts here and Chair McDowell.
Here.
Next, approval of minutes. Approval of the following minutes for the Board of Trustees. Policy Committee meeting, February 21st, 2022. Regular meeting, February 21st, 2022. Make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
Don't move.
Support.
Okay, I think...
You can give it to Pam.
Okay. We have a motion by Trustee Deambrosio and seconded by... Oh, it was motion by Thorp?
No, it was...
Yes.
I'm pretty sure I didn't say anything.
Well, I wrote down...
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Deambrosio, supported by Trustee Barry. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, may I have a roll call to approve the minutes?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Moser? Trustee Pechalakoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorp?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. Chair McDowell?
Yes. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Thank you, President Cavalluna, Chair McDowell, and the members of the board. Sorry. My name is Mac Mansell. I was an honor student as well as an all-state basketball player at Stevenson High School in Sterling Heights. I was recruited to play basketball at Grand Valley State, Saginaw Valley State, and Northwood University, but I wisely chose to continue my academic career and playing career at Henry Ford College. This year, I completed the fall semester with a 3.4 grade average and joined my teammates in the most successful basketball season in HFC history. There will be more about that later. Meanwhile, I am pleased to read this much HFC Board acknowledgements. Before I mispronounce any names, I'd like to apologize. I'm sorry. The HFC Roller Hockey Club received the invitation to compete in the National College Roller Hockey Association's national championship to be held in April 6th through 10th at the Wings Events Center in Kalamazoo, Michigan. The club finished behind Michigan State and Ohio State in the Midwest Conference this season. Second, Dylan Patenood finished first in the Junior College Division in goals with 28, assists with 28, points with 56, and star game points with 21. Dylan becomes the first player to lead in all categories in the history of the Junior College Division. Third, Dylan's brother, Carter, led all goalies in the Junior College Division in saves with 331 and wins with 7. Fourth, while the softball season will officially kick off next week, two Hawks have accepted full athletic scholarships to attend Fortin Memorial University in Miami Gardens next year. Congratulations to catcher Ali Matheny and pitcher Rachel Frederick. Last, for the fifth straight year, Henry Ford College wrestling competed in the NJCAA National Wrestling Championship. Congratulations to Coach Grant McKenzie and our wrestlers Jake Campbell, Yager Kiwontowski, Elijah Kidder, Von Patty, Deonte Taylor, and Cage Die. Now, I'd like to thank, now I'd like to present our Athletic Director, Ms. Rochelle Taylor, to provide additional acknowledgements.
Mr. Mansell, before I let you go off the microphone, may I ask you a few questions?
It's cool with me.
Is that okay, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Mansell, I'm sure we're going to talk about basketball and when that, when basketball is the topic after the Athletic Director talks, we'll talk with you and your team, but I just want to talk with you as a student presenter, and you probably don't know this, but every board meeting we have here, a student like you comes and speaks to us about a lot of other great things that are going on at the college, and I usually, I usually pepper them with some questions. But I've seen you handle pressure before, so I think you can, I think you can withstand.
Thank you.
So, 3.4, that's a fantastic grade point average. We're probably going to hear more about your really, really wildly successful year on the court. How did you, how did you handle, and were there any things that HFC did well or didn't do well to help you handle a 3.4 grade point average? And, you know, when I watched you play basketball, it was pretty clear you were practicing a lot, or you're maybe just naturally brilliant at the game, but in any event, there's only 24 hours in the day. How did you juggle that and what worked and didn't work?
Well, to be completely honest, I have to give full credit to our coaches. You can ask any of the team, or any of my teammates, we were, spent countless hours in the library, he made sure that we had all of our homework in, made sure that everything, we were on top of everything to eliminate any problems that could eventually come up. And so, I have to honestly give 100% credit to Coach Brad, Coach Wes, Payne, all of them, they all gave full effort and made sure that we were on top of everything and to allow us to play basketball. So, honestly, everything goes to them.
A little bit of natural brilliance on your part as well?
Maybe.
You probably didn't know this, Mac, but two fun facts. My son's nickname is Mac.
Great nickname.
Yeah, great nickname. And Coach Mark West and I played against each other in high school in basketball.
Really?
Yeah. Well, we're all, we're both old enough that our memories are foggy.
Very, very.
I tend, I tend to remember that his team was the Cardinals, and we, they seemed to lose more often. But, but I don't know, is Coach West here? Oh, there he is. He's going to be able to rebut that. Neither of us, I mean, we're nearly as good as any of you and your colleagues, but one more, I appreciate you calling out your coaches, but on the academic side, did you have any courses or instructors or advisors that were particularly helpful? Or were there, was there anything that HFC can, can learn from what your experience was that we did well in the academic realm that we can help those who come after you?
Definitely. There were a few professors that I had to reach out to email-wise, and when I was struggling with something or I had something to reach out, specifically Dr. Harvell, he was one of my professors that I had, and he did a great job. I had to email him a few times because either I missed an assignment or I had something that I wasn't quite sure about, and he cleared everything up instantly, same day, next day, and I was able to go through that class pretty headily and just, he made it pretty easy for me. And so, I'm sure it's the same for all of our teammates. We all had, you know, professors that helped us and kept it easy for us as we played and made sure that we were on top of our grades.
Okay. You don't want to mention anyone cheering from behind the bench?
Oh, I appreciate it. We all appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm teasing you. Thank you for putting up with my questions.
No problem. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I, there's a lot of basketball players here that'll chat about basketball, but I, I don't want to invade any of your colleagues' time to talk to Mr. Mansell about his non-athletic exploits.
Absolutely. Are there any questions? Trustee Watts?
So, Mac, you seem very comfortable in front of everybody. You have a 3.4 GPA. So, what are you going to do after, after college?
Well, I plan on continuing my basketball career. I hope to play professionally, and after that, we'll kind of see where everything leads me. I'm looking into sports management a little bit, so I'll see where that takes me, but as of now, I'm kind of just focusing one day at a time, and we'll see where everything leads me.
Okay, now on the spot, what's your favorite class?
My favorite class? Probably have to say English, because usually I can write essays pretty well, and, I mean, I've had to present a few times before, so I'm still working on it, but I think it's prepared me enough.
I was going to say, you do very well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you, Rob.
President Cavalluna, Chair McDonald, and members of the board, it's my pleasure to have a chance to introduce the 2022 men's basketball team. Before I do that, I just want you guys to know that they had a very, very successful season. There are 131 institutions that play Division II men's basketball in the NJCAA. Only the top 16 have an opportunity to even attend the national championship. We've been there under this coaching staff two years in a row. It's quite an accomplishment. We finished four games in five days. It was mentally, physically, and emotionally grueling, and I'm assuming the players and the coaches feel the same way. That's just how I felt. But we did finish sixth in the NJCAA. The team finished with a season record of 27 and 9 overall, and they were NJCAA Great Lakes District Champions again for the second year in a row. Before I have an opportunity to present these young men, I'd like to acknowledge our coaching staff and ask them to just stand and come forward. Our assistant coach, Mark West, who's, he's been with us completing his third year. Coach Kirk Bradley, assistant coach Kirk Bradley, who's completing four years with us. And then our head coach, Chris Shepherd. I also want to congratulate Coach Chris Shepherd. He was named the Great Lakes District Coach of the Year. He achieved his 100th career win on March 5th, 2022, when we beat McComb by a score of 85 to 78. Coach Shepherd doesn't know this, but I'm supposed to be presenting him with a signature basketball to commemorate that victory, that 100th career win. He did that in just five years. That's, that's a huge accomplishment. However, the ball did not arrive today, so.
Shipping supply chain.
So, now I have the pleasure to introduce our, our team, and I want to start with our returning players, which is, and ask them to come down as I call their name, Tyler Mack, Jamal Bradley, Omar Ziegler, and Sterling Scott. They will be returning to help us, and I'm going to, Keishon Devlin as well, and I want to indicate that Keishon Devlin is a member of the Hawks academic team this year. You guys can feel free to just... Please meet Ricardo Covin. Ricardo is, has been to the national championship two years. He's a returning player and made two Elite Eight basketball teams, so that's a great accomplishment for Ricardo Covin.
Come on down, Ricardo.
Andrew Leamy. He also participated on two Elite Eight basketball teams, and he's a member of the Hawks academic Sergio Stefan, two Elite Team, two Elite basketball appearances at Nationals. Daniel Autry. Daniel will be graduating this year. He competed as well on two Elite Eight basketball teams, and he does, he is entertaining multiple offers to play at the next level. Brandon earned honorable all mention, honorable mention All-Conference honors this year. He's a member of the Hawks academic team. He competed on two Elite Eight teams this year, and he's also graduating and entertaining multiple offers to play at the next level. Khalil Whitehead. Khalil made third-team All-Conference. He is entertaining a number of offers to play at the next level. Gary Solomon. Gary Solomon made second-team All-Conference. He was the NJCAA National Championship All-Tournament Team Honoree. He also was on the Great Lakes District All-Tournament Team. He was an MCCAA Player of the Week earlier this season. He's on the Hawks academic team. He will be graduating, entertaining a number of multiple offers, including Division One Carrington McCaskill. Carrington is our returning All-American, having earned that last year. This year, he earned All-Defensive Team, Second Team All-Conference, and Great Lakes District Most Valuable Player. Carrington will also be graduating this year. He's entertaining multiple offers, including Division One offers. And our board reader, Mac Mansell. Mac was Player of the Year, Freshman of the Year. He made the All-Defensive Team, All-Region, All-MCCAA. He's First Team All-Conference and Great Lakes District All-Tournament Team Member. He's also a member of the Hawks academic team, and as you can imagine, also entertaining multiple offers to play at the next level. And I'm sorry, I didn't see, I did not see Curtis Jackson come in. Curtis Jackson is our... Curtis, please come up. Curtis actually was MCCAA Player of the Week early, and then he had a season-ending injury, so he did not be able to participate for the rest of the season, so he will be a returner, and so we're happy to know that he'll be coming back.
Well, Ms. Taylor, may I ask you some questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, the first thing I want to do is, I want to address DA, Brandon, and Gary. I, I was wondering, and now I know you're graduating, so can I see you guys on the stage? Can I, are you guys going to come to graduation?
Yeah.
All right, so DA says yes. Brandon?
Yeah.
All right. And Gary? You going to be there? Okay. All right. All right. All right.
Carrington, I'm sorry, Carrington's graduating.
Oh, you're going to graduate too, Carrington?
Yeah.
All right, then you're going to be there too, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. So, we've got, we've got two, two, depending on which graduation you attend, there'll be a leader there I can, I want to introduce you to and brag about you guys, and then the rest of you fellows who are going to come back next year, we need you to graduate. And, and to the extent that this board can help you when you take the next step, which is what I know what the rest of you folks are going to do when you graduate, I want you to know that this board is supportive of that. And I want to just say a couple of things to you gents about the way you've represented this college. Some of the board has come to watch you. I know you all seen me watch you. I've had my children watch you, and I want to remark about that athletics is, is something that's difficult to do, but particularly difficult while you're going to college, in that you all are here and being successful academically while winning so many games and championships. It makes us proud of you, and it makes us glad that you're part of our college, because it's not easy. And particularly the way you do it, you play really hard, and you, I've seen you encounter some, some difficult players, some difficult referees, and I was always so stunned and appreciative of how well you took the pressure. And when you all lost to Davidson Davies, that, that was your game. That was your game. You had all rights to win that game, and you didn't, and the way you handled yourselves was something that men your age usually can't do. And it was classy. You shook hands. You were fouled and didn't get it called, particularly you, Mac, and, you know, it was heartbreaking. I know it was heartbreaking to you all, but we're so proud of what you accomplished. Two years in a row, you've gone to the national tournament. You've put your academics at a high level. You've put your athletics at a high level, and what I want you to see is that elected leaders like this can see that as the value you can add to a team, wherever your team is. You can be relied upon to work hard. You can be relied upon to do more than important things. Brandon, you cleaned my gutters.
Mine, too.
Yeah. And another trustee.
He fixed, he fixed, he fixed an amazing, like, it was so annoying that...
Thank you, Brandon.
...that I don't hear it anymore when it rains. I'm so calm, but what they did at the field was just beyond amazing.
And it's, this is what you guys should understand, is the value you can add as you become adults, that people will look up to you and value you for working hard, whether you're successful at the end or not, but that you worked hard and were able to accomplish things is even better. So, I want you to know how proud of you this entire board is and all the people who work at this college behind you. I want to make a couple of comments to this coaching staff. Coach Wes, I can't remember, it was, it must have been just dead even between us and the Twin Valley. Trustees, I want you to know, when, when this team lost the game, they were the better team, and they hit a little bit of a rough patch in the last two minutes, and Mac had a shot that was longer than I've ever seen him shoot, and went in and out twice and then out. And these young men were really beside themselves. And these, these three coaches came in, and I want to tell you about what, what the coaches said, because it's something you should be proud of. Coach Bradley said, "Look, we're going to have to turn the page. We've got two more games to play, and this is a letdown, but you, you can pick your head up and you can keep going." And I could see these young men look at him and believe it, and they came out and won the next game, and they showed they listened to it. And then Coach Shepherd said what all of us here know, but it's just so hard when you're as competitive as, and as, as successful as Coach Shepherd is to say, and he, it was, "You should have won that game. I can't change the fact that that's going to hurt forever, but this is going to be part of life. You're going to have things that you really, really wanted, that you deserved, and that the ball goes in and out." And these young men will likely never get over having lost that game. I wasn't even playing, and I'll probably remember that. But I think they'll also remember what Coach Shepherd said, which was, you know, after that game, we were the best team at HFC. A bunch of these folks who got elected to this board were proud of us, and, and we as a team can remember that we did something no one else at HFC ever had done. And that's the last thing I'll just say about the team, and that is that Coach Shepherd has been here for five years, and I remember the first time I met him, it was at an event after one of his practices, and I could tell he was tired, but he's made it an effort to come meet me at a social event and say hello. And then I came to find out how much he puts in with his colleagues to help these young men both understand the value of athletics and education. This team keeps students in the classroom and on the court because they're academically eligible, and they have to go over a Christmas break, a holiday break, which means courses stop and start, which means you have to pass all those courses, and it's really difficult. It's really difficult to keep players eligible. And the way they do it is, this, this man is a basketball coach, he's a great coach, but he's an educator. I mean it. He works for a public school district, like you all can really appreciate. He has a veritable library in the trunk of his car that helps these students have the books that they need for the courses. He, he calls it surveillance, and it's not an exaggeration. He surveils these kids, making sure that they learn to learn. And I don't mean that in a joke. He is helping them learn to learn, and as a result, they have wild success on the court, they're successful in the classroom, and you're seeing the next generation of leaders. And Coach Shepherd, you and your, you and your staff do that. 100 victories is great. I mean, I, there probably won't be another coach in this college that'll ever do that. But the truth is, you're changing lives, and I hope that you heard me when I said that on that terrible evening when you were down in your dumps. You're teaching young men how to be better, better human beings, and so I'm glad you're Coach of the Year, but I'll just say, you're someone that this board is extraordinarily proud of. And the last thing I'll just say is, Rochelle, you've built this. You are a rare talent, and I'm proud that you're my teammate, and I'm not surprised at all that you went out of your way, in fact, went to a separate city to find someone who said they could brand the ball quickly enough for this ceremony today, but that you wanted to honor this team and this coach with that. I've talked too long, and I apologize for that, but I just want trustees, you to know that what you're witnessing is really the life-changing aspects of public education, and it's, it's a monumental thing and pride for me. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Fellas, hold on just a moment, please. We had a couple of questions. Trustee Moser?
It's not much of a question, Madam Chair, but I'd like to also concur here with President Cavalluna and what he said. And I watch your games, although I was not present at the stands, I watch your games online. I was so excited, then I kept asking him, "What's the score?" "What's the update?" Since he was there, and actually, when it was in Indiana, I was like, "Oh, that's not too far away." But when I actually looked at the map, and I was like, "What was the city called?"
Danville.
Yeah, Danville. And it was like, "What is it, six hours away?" So, I was like, "Why, I don't think I can make it in the evening and come back the same night." But I want to say something very important, that this college has been in existence for, what, 82 years?
83, I think.
But you, as this team, you put us on the map. You literally did, because everybody was watching. Obviously, the devastating loss or when the referee calls, we're, although when we go outside Dearborn, we tell people we're from Detroit. Detroit versus everybody. You recall 2000, I don't know how old were you in 2003, but I was watching, I know, I was watching Pistons versus Spurs, right? And I witnessed robbery in NBA, that's National Basketball Association, with Robert Ori's last shot in Game Seven, right? But the Pistons were not, they're a professional team. They're professionals, and that's what I expect also from you. They took that loss as a learning lesson, and guess who was the National Basketball Association Champions in 2004, the year that I graduated from Fortin High School? It was the Detroit Pistons. That loss taught them a lot of things, and I know for those returning, it's going to be a lesson for your, for your entire life, that next year is going to be another challenge, and it's not to beat the other teams, it's to beat the, the accomplishment that you have accomplished this year. And if you reach wherever level you reach, we're still going to be very supportive of this program, and I know a lot of high school students who are looking right now for a community college to go to, and guess what? They are now eyeing Henry Ford College, obviously besides its academics and amazing professors, but they're looking at the basketball team, they're looking at Mr. Shepherd, and they want to come here and be like you. So, what you're doing, you might be playing a game, but it's not just a game. Ball is life, right? But I want to tell you also something about those who are considering going to D1s and possibly pro, you know, you should also accommodate, you should always complement that with education, even professionals right now. As you can see them, you're getting college degrees, because this is a sport that you're going to live for and work for in a few years, and then you're out of, let's face it, 40 years old. Most likely, you're not, you're not going to be playing basketball at 55. Soccer, you're 38, you're done, right?
Coach Wes and I are still killing it.
Yeah. We still got to play one-on-one. So, I want to tell you that please continue your education. That's my only advice for you, along with whatever you're doing in the game. Maybe you can, you know, help a brother out with some basketball training, yeah, so I can beat him before he leaves us.
It won't take much.
So, but I, once again, I'd like to also thank the team, Rochelle, and Coach Shepherd, and all of, I know you're given all the praise, but I'm pretty sure you have many of your teammates who have contributed to the success they've put in. Thank you for making us look so good, and we're really proud of the accomplishment, and please take that loss. You know, I've seen it in so many different places. Liverpool 2019 in soccer. One defender injured Mohamed Salah, and they lost, they were the favorites to win the 2019 Champions League in Europe. And guess what? 2020, they came back and won the Champions League. So, take this loss as something of badge of honor, because you lost, and as he said, you took it with class, and something that a lot of people won't take, a loss like that. So, thank you so much for making us look good, and best of luck to those graduating seniors, and especially Brandon. Thanks to you for fixing that.
One more moment, please. Trustee Watts?
Mine is really short, and I say this from a parent's perspective. My son played in the Hockey State Championship this weekend, and his game on Saturday probably sounded very similar to what you guys were having in terms of the referee. And it was clearly the other, it's bad when the other coach comes up and says, "I'm sorry, it was totally biased towards us." But it's, and this is what I said, and I think the coaches, because at the end, it was the coaches that put those kids back together, because they were crushed. And I told my son on Sunday, "It's the chip on your shoulder. So, keep that chip, because that's the fire that you're going to need to prove all of the naysayers next year." And to Coach Shepherd, thank you, because being a teacher and being a coach and a parent to all of these kids is not an easy emotional feat. And I tell that to all of you guys, because it's, it's not necessarily what you do on the court, but it's after. It's all, it's those life lessons that we can't replicate here in the classroom, because your classroom is the basketball court, and I think those memories, just remember those, because you never know when it'll end. So, thank you.
Is that all? No more?
No.
Thank you very much. Welcome. We are very proud of you. Next item, please.
President's items?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I appreciate, Madam Chair, you're allowing us to do a little bit longer of recognition and acknowledgements. It's probably no, no secret, I'm a big fan of this basketball program, and so it was a bit of a, a point of privilege for us to go a little long on that, and I think Trustee Thorp will reduce that time on his stopwatch for your meeting length.
Don't count on it.
But I, in order to try and keep your, keep your time under normal circumstances, I'll be very brief about my own president's updates. One is, I want to, I want to tell the board that we're continuing to work on how to implement our new strategic plan. I see, at least I did see, there is Dr. Perry is there, Dr. Nealan is there, Dr. Gonko, and... and Rhonda DeLonge, and Holly Diamond are there. They're the leaders of this work, and they lead the strategic planning team. We've met a couple times since the last time this board has come together, and we're planning on a pretty robust process to start rolling out strategies to go after our strategic plan. And I just want you all to know how serious the group is about that, but also how broad we have in buy-in across the college to go after those goals. And it is something I'm extraordinarily excited about and proud of, those teammates I just mentioned. There's a host of strategic planning team members, but I don't think I see any other of my colleagues who are on that team. So, thank you all for that. The last thing I'll say, and then I'll stop, is, as you all probably know, I circulated an email to the entire college about my own personal circumstances at the end of last week. I won't make many comments about this now, except to say that everyone who's involved in this college and cares about this college can rely upon me to do as this basketball team did, to fight as hard and push as fast and run as hard as I can, all the way until the last whistle blows. I still am extraordinarily optimistic about what this team is going to do with this strategic plan. I still am excited about Henry Ford College becoming the leader on student success, and I will support this board in whatever it decides as a transition process. But until my last day, I'll be pushing as hard as I can to support you all in what you've done for everyone who works here, which is to support us to take out a really important strategic plan. And those are my comments.
Thank you very much. I just want to add a couple things. Thank you very much, President Cavalluna, for your leadership, and I'm sure as the months progress, we'll have more to say about that. But you've been a wonderful teammate, and one thing, I had a conversation with someone today, and they talked about the value of not just you, but your family, how they embraced this community and how the community embraced them. And your children did well in the schools, in the school district, and your wife got involved in community projects. So the whole community embraced you, and we welcomed you, and you reciprocated by just becoming part of our group. So thank you for everything that you've done, and I'm sure we'll have more to say as the months progress. Anyone else?
Well, I'll keep my comments also to perhaps our farewell meeting, but I've also came to know Rush before I was appointed to this board through my work in the community and the college. And it's bittersweet to see him go. We wish him well, of course, for his future endeavors. And obviously, it seems like he's going to a place where we're still going to be in communication in some form at the national level. But I too have came to know Rush's family, and actually coached his kiddos to play soccer, so, and they play with my kids as well. So I'll have more to say, of course, about his leadership and what he has given to this college, and we thank him for that.
Thank you.
We will miss you, but absolutely understand what an amazing opportunity you have. And we've all known that you have been a gentleman that is, has high aspirations, I'll put it that way. So the best of luck to you in the future.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, next item, please.
Discussion items. Fiscal year 2023, budget and tuition. Vice President Zabkowski.
I don't know if I need this. Anyway, I do? Just a little history lesson here. What we normally do, what has been tradition here at the college, is prior to the presentation of the budget, usually in March of the year, we talk about different scenarios for revenue, tuition in particular. Do a presentation here in March regarding tuition, come forth with a recommendation, and then wait till next month to have you consider the recommendation put forward. Also then, in April, we then do the budget based upon the revenue and information that we know at this time, at this current time, and then within the next month, and then ask you to approve the budget in May. So I'm taking step one of four here tonight, where, got to put the cheaters on. Step one tonight, where we've looked at the tuition for this current year, fiscal year 2022. We've looked at the schools within the state, we looked at schools around us as well, where they stood in fiscal year 2022, and we've also looked at what the recommendations, actions that have already been taken by other colleges around us and within the state. You should have three items in front of you, one, two, and three labeled. We did talk in some one-on-ones over the last couple of weeks with regards to tuition in district, out of district, and out-of-state tuition rates for 2022. If you'll recall, with that tuition, Henry Ford for this current year was fourth from the bottom, I'll say out of 28 institutions, I'd rather use, we were 25th out of 28 when it comes to our in-district rate. Out-of-district rate, we were eighth from below, if I can do my math here, which I should be able to do, we were 19th at that point for this current fiscal year. So we've tried, have tried for years and years to keep the tuition level low. We're one of the lowest in the state. We do that with the fact that we are also very low when it comes to property tax support per student for the college. So keeping those things in mind, what I put forth in front of you is tuition in district, out of district, and out of state as a recommendation for the coming year for 2023. On the first top of worksheet number one, you can see that for 2023, Oakland will be at $103 per credit hour, Macomb at $106.25, and Henry Ford at $108 is our recommendation. Increases have been all over the gambit this year, if you will, for the coming community colleges. Oakland's doing a 4% increase, that has already been approved, Macomb at 2%, Montcom is at 2%, Delta 1.7, and Schoolcraft 3.5. Southwestern is contemplating a 4.8% increase, which is before their board, as well as Lake Michigan. So with that, we're recommending, we're putting forth a 2% increase for this coming year. And you can see that everybody isn't on here. We haven't had all of the colleges report. This is the most recent that I have through the Michigan Community College Business Officers' Association. Henry Ford for the out-of-district has been recommended, again, a 2% increase for out-of-district, which would put us at 188, which puts us lower than Schoolcraft. And Schoolcraft is, again, contemplating a 3.5% increase. They were lower than us this year in 2022, but will, by 25 cents a credit hour, be just slightly higher than us. And then the out-of-state rates were about in the middle of the pack when it comes to out-of-state. Breakdown that we have, as I mentioned during our one-on-ones, was about 35% of our enrollment is in district, and 64, 63% is from out-of-district. The remaining 1% to 2% is out-of-state. That is completely reverse of every college, every other 27 colleges.
What was the out-of-state?
Within the state. Usually, you see 80% in district, 20% out-of-district. But since we have such a small in-district population, Dearborn Public Schools, part of Dearborn Heights, our, how would you say, our population area and area is much smaller than everybody else. So, just to keep that in mind. What would 2% or recommended 2% tuition increase mean for the college? If you'll turn to page two, you'll see there the sustainable budget forecast for five years for fiscal year 2021, which was last year, where we project we're going to be for fiscal year 2022, which is about an $850,000 surplus, which is what we budgeted at mid-year, around $806,000. And then for '23, '24, and '25, I have highlighted on there. A number of assumptions are taken into account here, again, just assumptions. Tuition at 2% for this current year, 3% next year, and then 1.5% the year after. Again, just using those numbers for planning purposes. Then also for state appropriations, we're looking this year at 2.25%. The governor always shoots high, but the legislature doesn't usually approve it at that level. So we're looking at 2.25% as a permanent adjustment to state appropriations. 1.5% of plan in 2024, and then 1% in 2025. Enrollment, you see here in enrollment, we are also budgeting enrollment for this year as flat. This year's enrollment for 2022, we're using those final numbers from 2022 as the enrollment numbers for 2023. A 1% increase in 2024, and then 1% in 2025. All of the contractual obligations are included in here, the faculty contract, which calls for steps, but no across-the-board increase for '23 and '24. It does call for an increase in full-time faculty members from 179 to 183 for this coming year, and then 190 for 2024. Also, all of the support staff step increases, contractual obligations for the SSA through 2024 are included in here, step increases for Local 71, everything else looking at our best, I'll say, assumptions at this point in time. So with that, with a 2% recommendation for this year, our bottom line is $64,000 plus. You can basically say it's a break-even budget, is what it is, revenues equal to expenses. If you project 2024, and the numbers that I put forth for, just mentioned, for state appropriations and for enrollment, it's a minus of $132,000. But then again, that's a year and a half away, and we have plenty of time to look into addressing that. And then in 2025, a slight increase there, also of $84,000 surplus. So that's the effect of all of the assumptions that I just went over with you on our forecasted budgets for the next three years, but more in particular for 2023. If the 2% is not approved, or choose to do something else, I have page three on here, and what that 2% tuition recommendation does is it takes 2023 from a positive $64,000 to a negative $744,000. So a 2% increase in tuition yields just a little over $800,000 of revenue to the college. All the other assumptions are the same, faculty member, full-time equivalents, collective bargaining units, et cetera. But just wanted to show you that is where a 2% tuition increase versus a zero would take us. And again, emphasizing that a lot of the other colleges are taking a higher adjustment in tuition this year. I know we did 4% last year, but the year before that, we did 0%. So if you calculate it over the last three years, we're right around, would be right around 6% for three years, 2% per year. And we do know that inflation, when we were looking at this, inflation was at 6.5%, but now, as of last week, we're talking 8%, 9%. But the good part about it is, you know, a lot of our costs are already in place for planning for 2023, but there will be some ramifications, just as we found out already with the tech building when we went back and repriced the tech building and the construction on that. So that's what our recommendation is at this time, is a 2% increase in in-state, out-of-state, and out-of-district tuition. Questions?
Trustee Watts?
And I don't know if you have a hand, but what percentage of the student population receives federal grants?
Fifty, just over 50%, about 52%. And out of that, 52%, around 34 to 35 of that 52% receive 100%.
And then from that percent, do we know from 52% who do receive sub, how many of those students are in district versus out of district? Do we have that breakdown?
That, I don't know. I don't have that handy. I do know that if the in-district students are eligible for the maximum amount, they would have, with the new $400, coming in about $1,800 more available for other things than tuition fees.
Okay. All right. Is that something that we could look into? I just wanted to...
We sure can. I can certainly do that. That's a great question, and interested myself, is how that breaks down in district and out-of-district.
Trustee Thorpe?
Just a quick calculation, when I'm looking at the expenditures under the personnel costs, it looks like we're assuming about a 3% annual increase in those. Does that seem pretty realistic?
That seems pretty realistic, because the steps, you usually get, there's usually a 2% to 3% change in steps when you're talking about SSA and Local 71. When you're talking about 1650, it's a wider difference in steps. It could be, again, 4% to 5%, depending upon what the step is. And then the SSA contract just is set up where those who are on the steps get the step, and if you're beyond step 10, you get a 2% to 2.5% increase for the year if you're off the step scale. With Local 71, I believe it's 2.8%. And of course, we're going into negotiations with Local 71, because their contract runs out on June 30th of this year.
But we're expecting that our personnel costs are normally going to be going up by about 3% per year?
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Moses?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What was the inflation rate for this year, do you know?
Right now, it's tracking along last month at almost 8.5%.
And do we have, I know last, about four meetings or five, when we were talking about this time of the increase, about, like, the last time that we increased tuition, obviously it was last year, but there were, 2020, we did not increase tuition, correct?
Correct.
So we kept it at zero.
Correct.
And there was a historical paper that we saw where we actually have done that in the past.
Yes.
And then, and returned, the year after, we had to increase tuition by a huge jump, correct?
Let me see.
I'm not asking you to bring that up, but maybe you can just refresh my memory, John.
I don't believe it was a huge increase, but it was an increase. The last time we did a zero increase was in 2021, and then we followed up last year with 4.2%. You're right, in 2015, let's say 2016, it was a 6.3% increase in 2014.
Because the year before, we did not increase tuition, right?
In 2015, we did not increase tuition.
Do we know the reason why we did not increase tuition that year?
We felt that with the additional mill that we had at that time, and the reductions that were made in adjustments in staff, and the plans for hiring, and the, some of the givebacks that the faculty gave, we, and enrollment, enrollment was tracking well. We made a decision that in the fall, if enrollment, if enrollment was at a certain amount, we would not increase, we would only increase tuition by the winter. So we did zero in the fall.
Yeah.
We were planning to do an increase in the winter, but since enrollment was better than anticipated in the fall, we did not increase the tuition in the winter for 2015.
And from the list here that I see, Lansing Community College did not increase tuition this year? And the reason for that is?
I have no, I'm not, have done any...
Okay, we haven't done any research on why they didn't...
Other than I know they're higher than us.
Okay, so because from the list, and this list was chosen as a comparable?
Those are comparable, and those are the ones who reported, is what it ended up.
Okay, so, okay. And obviously, here we are, I mean, this discussion seems like I've been on this board for two years and a half, and we were, we always come to talk about the budget as something that we should be doing. And tuition increases is a huge topic. And unfortunately, none of us, obviously, have been a student in the last 10 years to know, but we do have kids, we do have nephews, we do have relatives, and we do know that tuition. When I asked my nephew about the tuition, not here, next door, because he's a senior now at U of M Dearborn, how much tuition he's paying, and the amount came to be double the amount that I paid in 2006. That's crazy. That's 50% increase of tuition. And I'm not just talking about Henry Ford here, but I think this conversation is warranted because I don't understand why are we driving the cost, or the cost is huge, and the federal government and the state governments need to start thinking about investing more into free community college, of making this affordable. As you said, 50% of our students receive financial aid. What about the other 50%? How are they making it? And I hope that my colleagues would think about those 50% because I know, might be thinking those other 50 are being covered by the financial aid, it's not much of an issue for them because, but we're, we might be making this decision, and I'm not advocating for, you know, approval or not approval of this 2% increase, but we really have to be cognizant of what's going on right now in the economy. Obviously, there's inflation, but there are still people hurting. That 2% increase might be detrimental to their future, or they might be thinking that I can't afford this. So I want to be sure when I make this decision that I exhausted all of my options before I pass the buck to our students to carry this 2% increase. And obviously, for those who are attending from out-of-state, it's going to be even a huge more cost to them than the ones who are in district. I've raised this issue before, and I know we're still looking into the legalities for this. This college receives, remind me, Mr. Sokowski, we are one of the lowest colleges that receive, or out of the share of the budget, we are one of the lowest that have that share from property taxes, correct?
Yeah, right. And I was looking at some of that information that was asked for by a number of you over the last week, and that is, when you take our in-district tuition fees and property tax per student, per full-time equivalent of what we get of our $16 million in property tax, and divide it by the number of full-time students we have, and add that to what they would be paying in tuition, we're right around $5,800 in revenue for tuition and property taxes for educating these students. The next highest is Mid-Michigan with $6,500. So almost $700 more. And I, I'll provide this to you, but you'll be flabbergasted when I tell you that for Wayne County, they have $19,500 behind every student.
So to put that in millions, how much do we get in millions from property tax every year?
16, just a little over 16 million.
And how much does Wayne County?
Over 68 million on 2.5%.
So they just turn on the lights and 68 million rolling?
That's right. You just turn on the lights and 68 million dollars rolls in.
So that's what I'm talking about, and this is why I raise this issue.
And I don't want to pick on them.
No, no, seriously.
Don't pick on them.
This conversation is not.
That's the way it is.
And I'm sorry for bringing this conversation here, but I think it needs to be happening here because the easy option is to raise tuition.
Right.
That's an easy option. I think we have done that in the past, and I challenge myself and my colleagues of looking into the bigger picture. Are we going to be sustainable? And I chaired the ad hoc committee to answer this question, and we came up with four different items. One that received very, kind of somewhat good middle consensus is to look into the option of increasing our tax base. So we're only depending on Dearborn residents who are paying, by the way, the highest mills for a community college. They have four mills. And community college, the ones who are in Wayne County are paying about 3, 2.75?
2.75.
Yes. So we're almost.
I got that from my financial director, financial agency at Dearborn.
So, and other community colleges, probably they pay only 1.5 because there's a huge tax base. And that's a major problem that we have to, we were not going to be always kicking the can down the road. And I know we have to really look into inflation and the cost, but I would like, my goal as trustee on this board is to hopefully see Henry Ford in the bottom of that list being the most affordable community college in Michigan. Obviously, we can't do that currently because of the financials, so it would be detrimental. But we want to be in that space where we afford quality education, which we are, at a very affordable price. When students are eyeing us just because of that basketball team, they always, they should also eye us for affordability. And since 60% of them come from out of district, this has to be competitive, we have to be competitive with their home district. And I hope that we will continue to look into that. Obviously, we're looking into that right now, to that legality question. Can we increase our footprint and go to communities like Dearborn Heights and to collect their taxes and have their students in person? I think that would be a win-win situation, but that conversation is obviously to be had with attorneys and to get the legal opinion if that possibility that could be done. I know that was tried 40 years ago, 50 years ago, and it did not work, but now it's a new era. It's a new time, and we have to talk about equity and justice. Thank you.
Any more? Trustee Watts?
So with, I know with the governor's budget, she had placed in there a 5% one-time increase.
Yes.
And a 5% every year. And you were saying that you think that.
4.5, but you're really around 4.
But you're thinking that it's obviously they're going to negotiate that.
Yeah.
So on this sort of posed tuition rate, on page one, and I'm sorry, not on page one, on page two, where would we see, is that reflected in this, in the revenue on page two?
On handout two?
Yes.
Yes, what's reflected in the state appropriations is at the very bottom, number four, 2.25% for 2023.
Okay, so you've already taken the 2.5% into account for the state appropriation?
Right, yes.
So then I'm, okay.
No, I took, her recommendation was 4.5% one-time and 4.5% permanent. We took 2.25% permanent and 2.25% one-time in building this budget.
He's being careful with his assumption.
No, I know, I get that. But I'm saying, is that then reflected in, under the revenue section for state appropriation?
Yes, yes.
So then we're really not getting much of a jump then?
No, it's under state appropriations, going from $28,161 to $28,885.
Okay. Okay, so it's already been in there. I think that's why I wanted to double check, just to make sure. Okay. All righty.
Trustee Thor?
Mr. Sokowski, on the same item with the state appropriations for 2024.
Yes.
We actually go down, but you say we got a 1.5% increase.
Yes, what we have to do is because when we built the increase, I put the 1%, I put the permanent and the one-time monies in for 2023.
So that's why 2023 looks a little bigger?
So I only started with half of it going forward for 2024.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's why you also see a reduction in mandatory transfers between 2023 and 2024. That 2.25% one-time is transferred out there for one-time projects, one-time things, gets taken out also in 2024 because it's not, not permanent money.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Trustee Barry?
No questions, just a comment, just a follow-up on my colleagues' comments, questions. It's very, very obvious. Okay, I'm looking at the numbers right here, the projected budget between this year, 2022 and 2023, we're looking at, out of $2.5 million, about $2 million of that is expenses for, you know, employee costs.
Yes, the instructional costs.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, you know, the subject about expanding our footprint, that came up five years ago, and it came up eight years ago, and it came up 11 years ago, and it's a very difficult, very difficult discussion. I remember you and I and Dr. Mead meeting for breakfast and having a discussion on the education I got, but then nothing, nothing ever happened. You can't talk about balancing a budget on a Ford college without eventually getting to the root of the problem, which is, nobody wants to talk about it. That's really normal, is employee cost. With all due respect to all of our staff and employees, and I understand inflation, I understand, you know, they deserve the raise that they get and stuff like that, but the direction we're going, and when, a couple of years ago, when I asked for this committee to be put together, and, you know, let's get right to it, I was met with, you know, I was getting a lot of pushback from a lot of union leaders and, to trustee Moses, it's like, yeah, we'll talk about it, we'll mention it, we'll get away, and, you know, John, I got nothing but the greatest respect for you. You're just delivering the message.
That's fine.
That's, has nothing to do with your work, your amazing work since you came to this college, but nobody would disagree with me there, but we're just going to keep coming back and raising tuition. This college used to operate on a 2.5 mill, not too long ago, then we increased it 0.5, and during an emergency, we raised a mill, then we, you know, we were at four mills. Very difficult, very, very difficult in your position right now. You're saying, so it's, you know, instead of 60, plus $64,000, we'd be in a negative 740, so it's about $800,000. And the only way you can find that $800,000 is if you go back to contracts, employees have the discussion, which everybody gets quiet when you start talking like that. And I know why, I understand why. So, so Adil, yeah, welcome, welcome to this process. We'll be back next year to raise tuition, we'll be back maybe not the following year, maybe the year after, raise tuition. It's an ugly feeling doing this where, yeah, everybody talks about, you know, in the media, I remember Mary Lane's comments, it was bouncing in my head, I remember Joe Guido's comments, you know, from way back then, trustee Pechikov, Roxton, President McDonald, we all agree that, you know, we're pricing, we're pricing education, we're just, we're just making it difficult, you know? What are the answers? Unless this college eventually gets some difficult decisions, not much, not much that can be done. So, I don't mind, I don't mean to sound negative, but that's, that's the truth. You heard, when you hear how quiet in a room when I start talking about.
Absolutely.
This is the only way, you have to get to it. You can't just keep, you know, I wish I could in my own personal life, just keep getting more revenue, more revenue, you know? I had to fix, I had to replace my gutters. Instead, you had to call Brandon to come, hey, put a Band-Aid on him for now, let's take care of it, you know? Those are difficult decisions to make.
Did Band-Aids for you?
What's that?
Did Band-Aids for you?
He did an amazing job, though.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so I'll just, I'll just, I'll stop right here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Barry, with all due respect, we're not quiet. I've talked to this at the district level when we were talking about possible budget cuts in the beginning of COVID situation, and I mentioned something that some also got upset by, but I'll mention it here again, and I hope nobody gets offended. We're in this together, and if we have to make any necessary cuts, we have to look at different ways of reducing cuts. That's, it is difficult conversation, and I think it's warranted. I just don't like the fact that we're always, this board is elected by the residents of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights in this school district, but we really need to look into the long-term sustainability. We need to make this college affordable, and if it comes down to the costs, let's look and share the sacrifice. If we are in this together, let's share the sacrifice while we look into, obviously, we, as an organization, every organization has waste costs and ways where can we bring, we either, for a businessperson like yourself, obviously trustee Barry, and everybody who owns a business, you either bring in new revenue, or you cut down your expenses to balance a budget. This is what we're doing here. But all the time is, this board does not have students who attend this college, and we're passing the buck to them every time we come and talk about this discussion. Again, that's the easy option. But I challenge myself and my colleagues to look into other ways of, especially that in this difficult times of COVID, and people are still hurting. Yeah, jobs are everywhere, and, but cost of living has risen so much. And I believe that in order to make this college affordable and an eye, and a place for, to attend, we really need to be having those difficult conversations on this table and ways of cutting costs before we make this as a last resort to raise tuition, and we need to look at other colleges that did not raise tuition and learn from them. Thank you.
Trustee Pechikov?
Just to enlighten trustee Moses, I had two children attending this college, as I said, on this board, and I voted for tuition increases. So I do understand, and I paid their tuition out of my own pocket. So I do understand the impact it has. I did it for many years.
I did not say we don't understand, trustee Pechikov.
Well, it sounded as if.
I'm sorry, but I had my wife attending this college, and I voted for a tuition increase.
That's right. So I'm saying, we all understand that this is not, not an easy decision.
This is not personal. That's not, don't take it personal.
No, 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 I'm just trying to explain to you that just because currently nobody has a student here, it isn't that we don't.
No, no, that's not what I meant. I said, we're not students. We don't attend this college. We are elected board trustees.
I'm just trying to explain, can I have my?
Absolutely, go ahead. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Thank you. Thank you. One, one of the assumptions is our student enrollment.
Yes.
Something that we are concentrating very heavily on, and you've been very careful with what you are assuming. But we also saw a huge enrollment dip recently in the last couple of years of more, more than, you know, we would have liked to have seen. It was in the negative, not a positive. Just because it's an assumption doesn't mean that's the way it's going to actually work out. And we could either see a nice increase in enrollment, which would then, moving forward, our assumption of the necessity of certain increases for tuition could be modified going forward if we wanted to make it easier on the students, if we are so lucky. So that is another way to concentrate in the, for the immediate future of helping offset any potential and finding revenue. It's not just about going out there looking for some other opportunities. That is one that we can really focus our energies on that would have an immediate return on the possibility that we wouldn't have to increase enrollment, I mean, increase tuition to that degree in the next couple of years. We, right now, have to deal with just this immediate next year to set the budget, and there isn't a lot we can do to change, to shift any of those numbers. So I suggest that, you know, we really do focus on the strategic plan and make sure that we're in a healthy place to compete, not just with our tuition, but with our programming. but with our programming, with our, with, with what we're offering students, so that those out-of-district students continue to find us the exciting alternative, and they are willing to pay the difference in order to come away with a degree or a certification that has true value to them in the real work world. And that's what I would say that I want to focus on right now, because that's something we can deal with right now.
I want to just add to what trustee Petchikoff has said, and I believe that the student enrollment, um, team is still working diligently on that effort. So do you have any updates on that, President Cavallino, what's there?
The question is about actively working towards enrollment?
Yes.
Yes. I could-
I think I got the, the name wrong, it's the, the student enrollment, or the-
The strategic enrollment management team, um, i- is in the process of handing their work over to the first two goals of, well, actually more than that, but primarily the first two goals of the strategic plan, uh, which are enrollment focused. The next two goals after that are, are what I would describe as more retention focused, and, and, but, I, I, yeah. If you look at this strategic plan, and I, I would ask you to compare any other strategic plan that any of the other colleges in this region or around the country, you will find very few that are as focused as ours, and it, there is no hiding from what we're focusing on, which is getting as many students as possible in the doors, keeping them in as long as possible to get them the credential and move on to either a job or a four-year degree, and, uh, just simply put, if any of those eight goals are achieved, every single one of them will go to the bottom line of the budget you're discussing now.
And I know prior to the pandemic, the work of that, um, strategic enrollment management, uh, group was doing some really good things, and they had found some success, and I believe the things that were successful are continuing.
Yes, uh, that team produced the first enrollment increase in, between eight and nine years in the college, uh, and that was monumental success. I think that success would have continued into the winter of 2020, but the entire planet stopped revolving, um, as a result of a pandemic. Of course, I'm being hyperbolic, but, um, ye- yes. No one on any side of this debate would question whether this college is completely focused on enrollment as one of the major issues we have to deal with here, and we made good progress on that point, and this strategic plan now is, I think, again, I, um, the people I called out earlier could, could, could tell you that they've surveyed strategic plans that run the gamut, and you're not gonna find one that's more focused on, um, enrollment, both as a mission-based outcome and as a budget-based outcome.
Thank you, trustee Barry.
Just a quick comment, uh, we're hearing about increasing enrollments from my colleagues and President Cavallino. All the books I've read, all the seminars I've attended, owning a, you know, a small business for the last 38 years, I have yet to see a business plan where you increase the price of your product to get more sales. That's all I can say.
One thing I just have a question about, and I don't know you have, if you have the information, um, available, but I'm curious, because, um, our in-district students, that's where the tax burden is, what would be the numbers, how do the numbers, um, come out when you don't increase that particular group, since they are approximately a third of our students? So if you take out the, the 2% increase for in-district students, but leave it for out-of-district and out-of-state students, how do those numbers pan out? Do you know, or can you give me that information?
I've, uh, I've looked at that, trustee Watts, that came up with a very good, uh, comment on that, so that is what I want to look at, too, is how much of our in-district students who are not dual-enrolled students, uh, are on either full Pell, uh, grants or partial Pell grants, so, uh, I don't know off the top of my head, uh, what that would be, but my guess is since we're, number one, uh, at only 35% in-district, out of that 35%, there's about 40,000 credit hours per semester, and our dual enrollment is around 14,000 of that 40,000, so I'd be looking at the other 28,000 credit hours or approximately, geez, I'm doing the math in my head, about 1,600 full-time students, I'd have to look and see what the effect would be.
But you think that it's, uh, it's small?
It probably, it probably is small, it probably would take us from surplus of 65,000, but probably a deficit of about $150,000 on that if you looked at all in-district students, but I certainly could give you that information on, uh, on the effect of Pell that has on those students.
Just curious, trustee Watts?
I did want to say, and I think trustee Moses brought this up, and it's a good point to remind us, so when I attended the ACCT, the Association of Community Colleges-
Association of Community Colleges.
Thank you, um, the free college was on everybody's mind, it was a forefront, and I think that, and I know that it did pass, but I don't think it's dead in the water. And the feeling that I received from everybody was, continue the conversation, because I think it has traction, it may not be as fast, but that seed's been planted. And so when I asked Secretary Cardona, what can we do, because we, we, again, we, our students are getting this taste of a, a chance of free community college, and I don't think this discussion is going to go away, it may be paused. So what we can do as a board, and he had said, is continue those conversations with your elected officials, and continue to advocate for our students, because we do have students, and this was brought up, who may qualify for FASC, but they may not want to for many reasons, and it may be because if they're homeless, they might, they don't have the address, little things, and I know Congress was looking into that, and that was something that they were trying to make, and they are changing it, but it's not happening as quickly. So those loopholes of those students that wouldn't necessarily apply would be able to apply. And I think with that, there's, there's no easy answer, but I, based on the conversations and just being able to, to have those, those one-on-ones with the people from across the country, it is continue those conversations, continue to advocate, continue to reach out to your elected officials, and especially for those students, because if we have those stories from those students about what free community college would mean to them, those are the stories that we need to get up to our elected officials beyond this room. But I think it, it's not an easy answer, and it's not a go-to, but I think it is definitely on the forefront of everybody who attended. That was the, that was the main thing, so, I think it's-
Thank you for that, trustee Moses.
Just to your question, are you saying that we should, and I'm not asking you, are you advocating for a tuition increase, you're asking if we were to not increase for in-district, but increase for out-of-district, is that you were asking?
I was just saying, we were talking about right now, 2% across the board for everyone.
Right.
I was just wondering if there would be a big impact-
Right.
-not raising the people that we already get access from, but apparently it wouldn't make the-
Yeah. I have a question about fees, if I may, and I've asked this in the small, um, uh, group meeting, uh, Mr. Sokowski, is that something that is in the works for us to compare tuition and fees? I know the industry of, seems like everybody's comparing tuition rates, but I would like to compare final cost, how much does it, if a student is enrolled at a community college in Detroit, we're, we're not gonna name the college again, right, or say in another city, and they take 12 credits full-time, and they're in-district, right? How much do they get actually charged on average with fees? And I know fees, obviously, you know, they, they alter, it depends on which classes you take, you may have this fee or that fee, but I'd like, I'd like that to be compared, not just with tuition, and where, where, where our college fares out as far as tuition and fees.
Okay, we have been working on that, uh, I do have, uh, Brian working on that.
Appreciate that, that would be very helpful for me, thank you.
Trustee Petchikoff.
And just for clarification for the question you asked about negating the 2% on in-district, that would, you're including the dual-enrolled students as well, that, um, because I don't know, they're in-district.
Or they pay no tuition.
Right. They don't pay it, we, the school district pays, so, we're, but, we're paying the in-district rate when we pay it, so I want to make sure, are you asking for the full in-district student population, which includes the dual-enrolled students, or just those students?
That wasn't my intent, yeah, that wasn't my intention.
That's why I'm trying, that's why I'm trying to understand what, what you were wanting. I, could, then we would have another layer of-
Yeah.
-who pays what then, it would be the dual-enrolled students versus in-district?
Right, yeah, and I'm not looking to do that, I was just-
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure I understood.
I didn't think it would make a big difference, but I was just kind of curious.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what, what the question was.
Trustee Watts.
So we have 64% of our students come from out-of-district. What is the number one city that those students come from? Do we have that? I think it was mentioned, Detroit, and how many of those students from Detroit take advantage of the Detroit Promise?
Not a high percentage, uh, we have, uh, less than 400 students, uh, who are in the Detroit Promise program, and, uh, 30, uh, let's see, we have approximately 20% of our students are from Detroit, uh, and let's just say we're a 10,000, a 10,000, uh, student base per term, that's 2,000 students, so less than a quarter of the Detroit students are Detroit Promise students, that's, that's back of the napkin, man.
Any other questions? Thank you, Vice President Sokowski, for the, um, information, and this was a good discussion.
Thank you. Madam Chair. I just wanted to make note of your comment, and I'll work with, we'll work with Holly, we'll work on, or Laura, we'll work on that.
Madam Chair, may I-
Yes, absolutely.
-just address a few items? The, the discussion among policymakers and among the public generally for the cost of higher education, for the last at least 10 and maybe 20 years, has been an alarming increase in the cost that students face, there's no doubt about that. But one thing that is not well-known, and this is not rare for the community college space, it, the community college experience is, is often subsumed into the four-year experience in what is generally thought and discussed, and this is one thing that, um, I, I would just note as, as a cautionary tale, somewhat with regard to what trustee Moses had mentioned, and that is that historically, community colleges are less than half the cost of traditional university and four-year programs, and this college is well less than half the cost. In fact, uh, for in-district, we're about a quarter the cost of what the university experience, um, is. But even so, in the last 20 years, that discussion, and frankly consensus about the cost of higher education being too much, has caused a major shift that I would ask you to consider thinking about shifting your own thinking, and that is, the cost borne by students has become so high that policymakers, particularly at the national level, and now in Michigan, have decided that a government entity will take on that cost. It's almost the single-payer model that is debated in healthcare. This is, this is what has given rise to the free college movement, and if you are on a board, as you all are, and you're contemplating pricing the tuition, you have to, and I would encourage you, to consider that the new discussion would be, how much does it cost to serve the student needs that we have, with all of the changing needs, and shh, shh, do we have more liberty now to set that cost, because at least a majority, and maybe growing majority of our students are not the ones paying the bills? And let me give you an example of that. If you are a citizen of Dearborn, let's just imagine my children 10 years from now attend Henry Ford College, uh, and they pay, um, to go full-time, uh, they will pay about $4,000 a, uh, for the entire, uh, college degree, the two years, and if, if they get Pell eligibility to the full maximum, they'll get $6,500. So, so, and, and we do have some students who are not Pell eligible full, and they, we do have some, uh, students who are not, um, who are not below the poverty line, which is what Pell often is a proxy for. But if, if those individuals live in Dearborn, they are simply not going to find the quality education that this college offers at anywhere near the price, it's not even close. And, uh, it, it is just, so, that's one question. The next question is, 2,000 of our students come to us from high schools, the majority of which are from Dearborn, and those families do not pay to use these services. Again, a shifting of, from the family to a government entity. Just last year, the state government said, if you were working on the front lines as a pandemic worker, you also will have your cost of education shifted from your own self to, uh, the state government, if the Pell eligibility wouldn't take care of you. If you're 25 years or older, you also now will have your cost shifted to a, a government entity. And so as these shifts happen, I would ask you to consider that there becomes much less of an incentive to be the lowest-cost provider. In fact, it is potentially an opportunity to consider that this is an opportunity to take what this government entities are saying, which is, we trust you to set the price of your, your, your cost, and now we're starting to realize that some of these students deserve a lot more expensive services. And as this discussion is changing over the last 20 years from the shift, we're now actually incentivizing, and if you look at our strategic plan, you're gonna see dramatic devotion to those students that deserve more services because they traditionally are not as effective in any higher education model, but even in community colleges. And I have to be candid to you all, that is going to be expensive. Now, the state and federal governments have helped us to try and engulge that, but, um, at this college, if you're a free college student, you are very likely those students who need that extra support. And what we at this college are trying to do is find a way to devote those resources, and I think we've got the right team to start doing that, while not overburdening those students who can afford something out of their pocket. And how do we do that? Well, I'll tell you how we do that. If you look, and this, this board does an annual review of our budget, if you look, each year, we compare ourselves to similarly situated colleges, and how much we spend in the buckets that cost to run a college. And every single year, we are at the median or below in devoting resources to high-paid employees like, like administrators. Every year, we are at the median or below in how much we spend for IT services. Every year, we are at the median or below in what we spend for facilities. Where we spend more money is true, in, uh, helping students and teaching students. And, um, that's, that, that is a, that is a, a judgment call on your budget, and it's one that you all have the authority to direct the, the president's office on, and I'll tell you, the way we continue to grow our fund balance and balance this budget with modest increases in tuition increase, is that these people who work out here do the same job that all the other colleges that I'm looking at here, Macomb, Oakland, Lansing, they do those jobs with less people. If you look at our college, there are less people who do those jobs. Now, are they well-paid? Yes, here at Henry Ford College. Are they at the top of the scale? Some of them, no. Do they have good benefits? Yes, but you had 20 young student athletes here just talking to you, and, and it's not easy for those students to come out of the backgrounds that they have, play basketball, win championships, and then make it through an exam season. And it's because these people do a lot of work per body.
And not just make it through the exam season, excel, excel.
So, um, so I, I encourage you to contemplate that, uh, we're, we're, we are in a corner, trustee Moses is right, we are going to have to address this, and if it is anathema to think about increasing tuition each year, it, we, we should, we should address that, because if we can't increase tuition marginally each year, like the vast majority of institutions, then we should recalibrate. And we can recalibrate. Frankly, Dr. Nealon has done an exceptional amount of work to help me, because I have asked him, I want to know how much it costs to put on that class, I want to know how much it costs to put on that class. I did that when we started, because I was worried we'd have to cut the budget. Now, thank goodness, we've, we've, we've rallied as a college, and we haven't, but if, if this board wants to cut the budget, I will tell you, we're the easiest cut- I will tell you where the easiest cuts are going to be. They're in academic offerings. This college offers a liberal arts education from STEM to STEM, from pottery to world religions, from English to advanced mathematics. And if you live in Dearborn, you pay, even with the modest increase we're proposing, $108 per credit for coursework that is as good as Wayne State and Eastern Michigan University and Oakland University at one quarter of the cost. But if we do want to shrink the size of the college, we can do that. I would simply suggest to you that it may not be worth the goal. Because the goal, if it is to keep costs down, there's very little juice left to squeeze out of the fruit. And I would just say, if the idea was to keep people wanting to come to Henry Ford College because we would cut prices, we would get more customers by cutting prices, I would believe that if we saw more students who were making that pivotal decision. But the truth is, our students aren't really making that pivotal decision on the difference of $4, $7, even $10 per credit hour. I believe those students are making the difference. The 65% of them who come and pay extra to come here because of what you heard Mac Maxiell say here. And I have to acknowledge to you, and it's a tough call, it's expensive. Calvin Harvell, the instructor that this person called out, we give him salary to do extracurricular support to students like Mac Maxiell.
That makes a difference.
Well, and so, the one thing I would just say is, I know it's hard to do this, and we may need to adjust it. But you don't have a bunch of sloppy, lazy, not worth the investment type of people who, and I'm not suggesting you're saying that. What I'm suggesting is, the tight budget, and these vice presidents know, I am the worst person on the budget for them to deal with. I promise you. They can't even get administrative assistants hired, which positions that have been filled in the past. Because I know how much it is tough for you to make these votes. But I promise you, and if you look at our budget over the last several years, you've got an institution that's worthy of supporting these kind of modest requests. And it's coming, it's coming. Higher education is going to shift to the model you supervise at P-12, which is where someone else is paying. It's a government entity that's paying. And then you lose the incentive to keep costs as low as you otherwise think. In fact, you would hurt the students that we have a mission to help. I probably am not hiding the fact that I'm asking you to consider this proposal.
All good points, and I appreciate you bringing them up. Trustee Moses.
I don't know how much time we have. I think this has been a very extensive discussion. But I'm liking where this is going. At least we're thinking, or hopefully thinking, outside the box. When Trustee Barry came to my house after the first COVID case, and we didn't know that we had to wear masks at the time, right? He came to my house and he talked to me about the experience. And he told me, this COVID thing is going to change education forever. I'm like, come on, man. It's just a cold, it's going to end in a month. We're going to be fine, we're going to bring back students next month. And I guess the wisdom here that he has of many years after me, right? Or being on this earth for so long that he has some wisdom. Right? So he told me, this thing is going to change education forever. I actually, I chuckled, right? But he was right, and he loves to hear that. But, hearing that he's right. But I was wrong, I was definitely dead wrong. This COVID thing changed things forever. We're not doing things like it was 2019 anymore. I actually worked for a healthcare company all of these COVID years. I worked 16 hours, and my colleagues know how much busy I was working with doctors and engineers to get those COVID applications up for users. In fact, when we released our COVID app, we had 500,000 people hit our servers, and our server crashed. And because people are trying to register for the serology study and register for the COVID vaccine when it was released in the beginning. And we looked like fools at the IT department, hey, your application crashed.
Trustee Moses.
I'm sorry, and I'm going to wrap this up. I just want to say that Ford also is no longer a cars company. They're a mobility company. I took a job in December, I left Beaumont Health, and I do teach right now. I teach online from 9:00 to 5:00, and I teach online. And I teach students who have graduated from bachelors to learn coding. And in 14 weeks, I have to turn students who probably majored in biology into software developers. So what I teach in one week, Chair McDonald, is being taught here in one semester. And unfortunately, last week, I had to release two students of mine. I have 24 students, and they're in New York City. So I teach them over Zoom. I had to release two students because they could not keep up with the curriculum. They don't have the support, they don't have a counselor like here who's going to help them work with their time. And they have to be fully dedicated. They cannot take another job or be enrolled in another program. That's part of the requirements. But this program was started in 2018 with this company. And they actually offered me to pay 150% more what I was making at Beaumont. So while I make good money now, but this thing, what they're doing is pretty much hard competition. And the requirement is a bachelor's degree in states outside Wisconsin. But they're only requiring associates in Wisconsin. And it's because of different reasons that Wisconsin, some clients in Wisconsin who take these students after they graduate, and they make $60,000 starting salary, they only require bachelor, associate's degree. But they're saying there are companies who are willing to take students with no degree. So that is competition to us. And there are so many bootcamps right now. If you go look up bootcamps in tech, so many, and we're paying these students. So what I'm saying is that the future has changed, Trustee Barry. And we have to be competitive, not only with community colleges nearby, we have to be now competitive with private companies that are going to take those students in and turn them to do a certificate, to do a bootcamp certificate, that they get this and get a job in 14 weeks. What I'm saying is that things have changed forever. And we have to not just settle for less and not say, let's kick this can down the road. We have to address it now, and address it with urgency, and find the creative solutions. I'm glad that we're doing the strategic enrollment management. I'm looking, and John, you're being very realistic here about the 1% increase. I'd love to see that 3% increase, 4% increase. I know you're saying this guy is crazy, but we have to work. And I know how your teammates here, President Cavalluna, work hard to retain students and to recruit students. And we all have to do that. But I think we have to do better than just passing the pump. Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
If it's the federal government paying for the classes, if it's the state paying for the classes, or if it's a working man or working woman paying for the classes, it's still coming out of the same pot. The state or the federal government just doesn't print money. They collect taxes. So that Dearborn resident is paying pretty much, I mean, it's getting to triple whammy here. The state of Michigan does not print money, they collect taxes. So I'm looking at the last few years here, the expenses. Nobody's saying our employees are lazy and they don't deserve good compensation. Nobody's saying that. I'm looking at instructions right here, cost of instruction, it's pretty flat. Matter of fact, last year, in 2022 and 2023, is almost the same, maybe $40,000 difference. Physical plant, well, you know, costs go up, so a little increase every year, and it's going to continue going on forever and ever and ever, increases there. Just administrative loan, administrative loan is $1.45 million difference between '22 and '23. Nobody's saying cancel program, nobody's saying stop teaching English, nobody's saying stop teaching math. All I'm saying is, ever since I joined this board, it's been the same discussion. We need to get to it. You don't have to shrink the budget, you do not have to shrink the budget in order to do, I mean, if you, just imagine, imagine if the headlines tomorrow say in Detroit News, Henry Ford College just decreased their, I mean, people will be looking at Henry Ford. I mean, we said it earlier, somebody said it earlier, that, you know, this team put Henry Ford College on the map.
I said that, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, hate when you do this, you give me off. But yeah, no, I mean, nobody's saying, I value everybody here. I am very thankful for everybody here. I'm very thankful for all of our employees, every union, every one of employees, I value that. But this has been the problem. I've heard presidents come and presidents go and tell us there's a structural, there's a financial structural problem at this college nobody ever wants to talk about. But we'll just have these discussions, and you know, I hear Trustee Watts and Trustee Petchikoff's point of view, and everybody else's point of view. And we'll meet next month, and you know, we move on. Thank you, Madam President, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I just need to understand, I may be a president who have come and gone, but...
Don't take it personal. I'm going back to, you know, 10, 12 years ago, when we almost got in trouble. Please do not personify, you know, we had a great discussion the other day. I have nothing but respect for you. The morale in this college, you're the first person who was able to solve that issue. That's very important to every board I've served on for the last 12 years. I have nothing but respect for you. So I don't mean come and go like, just because it's bad timing. It's just a term that I use. I've heard presidents say, unless, I've heard presidents after they left, I've heard from vice presidents after they left this college, unless you fix the financial structure of this college, eventually you're going to hit that wall. This is not personal, honest to God, it's not personal.
That's everyone. Well, that was a good and lengthy discussion. We have another discussion item, so we're going to try to make it brief. So I'm going to go ahead and lead the next item of discussion. And that is the president's transition. This is the beginning stages of what needs to happen. And again, I want to thank President Cavalluna. He's served us well through some very difficult times. And he's planted some great seeds, and we're in a good place. So, but I want to say that hiring a president is one of the most important duties that we do as a board. And it impacts every stakeholder, and it also impacts the future of this college. So it's a huge duty that we have to do it, and we have to do it right. It will take a lot of time, but it's time well spent. So a couple of things that I want to say to lead into the discussion that we're going to have is, I've sent everybody Policy 1200. So I hope you might have had a chance to look at it. And it's just basic policy, employment of the president. Just to kind of give everybody an idea of what has to happen or what has happened in the past, and the things that we need to keep an eye on when we're moving forward with this process. Now, excuse me. Again, this will be a long process, we have to take our time, we have to be due diligent, and we have to do it right, because it's so important. And I want to share some thoughts, and then I'm going to open up the discussion. We have, in the past, set up a presidential search committee. And that process has served us well in the past. A couple of things to keep in mind when we're doing that is that this is an election year, and we do have two board positions that are up. And we also have, we may also, by the time this process is over, we may have a new chair sitting in this position, depending on how long it takes. And in the past, it has been a lengthy process, like I've said more than once. This board recently formed an ad hoc committee, and that was to review the president's contract. And I think, those that served on that committee, how many times did you meet? Once or twice, or?
Just once.
Just once, okay, but you did meet. And it was, like I said, to review the president's contract. So obviously, there's no need to review the president's contract again. So I was just considering that perhaps, since we no longer need that, and the work that they've done, even in their one meeting, closely relates to the work that needs to be done by the presidential search committee, and that none of the folks that are on that current committee are up for reelection, so there wouldn't be a disruption in their service. I think it might be wise to use that formed ad hoc committee as a presidential search committee. And also, it just happens, the folks that are on that ad hoc committee are, President, I'm sorry, Trustee Thorpe, Trustee Watts, and Trustee Petchikoff. And it just so happens that those were also, by coincidence, the ones that were formed, or that were serving on the presidential evaluation committee this year. And since that also doesn't need to take place, it kind of frees up their work to continue. So that is something that I think might be beneficial or something to think about. I want to open it up to the discussion there. But again, our ad hoc committees are volunteers. So if those folks that are serving are still interested in serving in that position and want to continue volunteering, and if the rest of the board agrees with that, I think that's one place to open up the discussion.
I think we're talking about two different things here, and I would have to disagree with you respectively. I think that committee was agreed upon by all of the board members. We did not, did we vote for it, create it in public? Or was it just an agreed?
It came out of a closed session.
It came out of a closed session.
Closed session, and we voted on it to form it here, right? Did we vote on it?
No, it's an ad hoc committee that all committees are...
Right, so this is not an ad hoc committee, this is a committee that we...
No, this would be an ad hoc committee as well.
Well, can I speak, Trustee Petchikoff?
I'm just explaining.
I know.
Okay.
You do have your time, and I do have my time.
Yes, please speak, and then I'll call you, Trustee Petchikoff.
Yeah, I'm addressing the chair. That whenever we create any committees, I think the discussion has to be here. And you're making a suggestion, which I disagree with. I believe that when we initially agreed upon Trustee Thorpe and Trustee Watts and Trustee Petchikoff to be on this committee for the obvious reasons that we had those discussions. And I was gladly, you know, I had interest, but I thought they would even make a better job in having that goal achieved for us. But right now, we're talking about a new president. We're talking about a search committee that will do extensive, a lot of work. And I think that we should open the floor for nominations from all the board members. I do not think we should exclude members who are running or up for reelection. I think that is, I don't know the reasoning beyond that.
Well, my concern...
I mean, even if, I'm sorry, even if they finish their term and say they don't even get reelected, their term would just end in December 31st, as it's dolly noted. So I would hope that we talk about a new committee with a new committee chair that is agreed upon and that we vote on, we all agree on. This decision or this committee is crucial, as you said, is very important. It needs to reflect this board's diversity. It needs to have folks who are committed, who have the time. And if, I hope that we have a lot of interest. And I'm considering this committee because I love this college. And I want to make sure that this committee produces a good recommendation to all of us because we near, in this committee, as I understood, it narrows down the number of candidates who apply for this position to a few, to three or four, and says, for interviews. So the work of this committee is crucial. And I don't think Trustee Barry or Trustee Deambrazio should be excluded from the nomination. We should make a new committee.
Well, my concern is, because this could very well run into next year, and I almost anticipate that it will.
July, we still have six months, I think. I don't know how long, Trustee Petchikoff, maybe you can give us some...
Trustee Petchikoff.
Okay, here's a couple of things. Yeah, now, okay, okay, here, here's a couple of things. Number one, it is the President or the Chair's choice to form the ad hoc committee, we all, each of us independently can volunteer for it, that's the difference between a standing committee and an ad hoc committee, but it is up to the President to assign, we don't vote on who gets to be on it, it's something you volunteer for, and then the President accepts and forms the ad hoc committee with three members, that's in our bylaws, you can read it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? It's in the bylaws. Now, since I've been on search committees in the past, and I do understand how long it takes, the search committee's first job is to get together, usually with the help of somebody from, on the cabinet, to pick a search firm.
Right.
All right? They, we do an RFP, we go out and vet them, and then we submit our suggestion back to the full board to vote on who we would like to use as a search firm.
Correct.
The search firm then takes over the bulk of the initial, and it isn't just the committee members who are then involved anymore, we, we all, as a board, determine how many people from the community should be invited to be part of the search, usually you end up with twenty to thirty people, depending on how large it is.
And there are laws and guidelines that we have to follow, too.
There's a lot of logistics involved with it, every, every stage is brought back to the full board to decide what kind of parameters you want involved with it, and then you are guided by the search firm with all of that information. So, yeah, it is, it's done in phases, so it can be time consuming, then you have to wait, and it's usually a national search, I don't know any search we would ever do that wasn't, that's going to take some time, so, yeah, it could...
How long, how long has it, sorry to interrupt.
Well, um...
The previous one, how long did it?
So, all right, on the previous...
Trustee, you were on the one, yeah.
Yes, Trustee Barry and I were on the previous one. I was informed, I think in February of whatever year, that we were going to be starting it, so when I went to an ACCT event, I was working and trying to identify search firms at that event. I believe that it ended up being in, like, June or July, that the, that President Jensen left, and I don't know if at that point we had already selected the search firm, but I remember President Cavalluna, wasn't it, like, cold days in February where we were doing the interviews, or April the following year?
Yeah, it's a very time consuming process.
So, I'd, I'd say twelve months and maybe fifteen months, start to finish? Trustee Barry, I don't know if you have a different memory of it?
I believe with Dr. Jensen, we knew, or the board knew beforehand he was leaving, right?
Yes.
So, they did not start the work until he left?
The timeline changed.
Okay, so, but since the hiring of that search committee, until the, the hiring of President Cavalluna...
From the time we got the search committee, Trustee Barry, I feel like that was in the fall, does that seem right?
Correct, yes, sir.
It was, it was in the fall, and then it was, wasn't it like March or April that we were doing all the interviews?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I think it was, well, the start date was July, but I think it was like May or so that we actually had done the vote then.
When did you start?
Jack?
Well, may I, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
This board is a member of at least three associations that could be very helpful in getting, getting some recent actionable data on some of the questions that you're talking about now. You have the American Association of Community Colleges, you have the Association of Community College Trustees, then you have the Michigan Community College Association, all of which give you a good opportunity to interact with trustees who are facing this problem now and in the very recent past, and I would be happy to identify a staff member, who's not me, to help you engage those associations to any extent you want that, and I'm, I'm being very careful to not be involved in this process, but I will work hard to support whatever this board needs.
I just want to clarify something, please. I wasn't trying to exclude anybody for any other reason, other than I think that it may make the process more difficult. So, that was my thought, and that was the only reason why, since we already had this one committee that was set up, that it started to do similar work, because if you look at the list that I sent you, the 1200 policy, it talks about the President's contract, and that is a big portion of the work that's gonna be done. So, that's why I thought that it was in line with, and again, I wasn't trying to exclude anyone, but I just think it's important that we make sure that we have a group that can do the work, complete the work, and is available when needed to get the work done.
From start to end.
From start to finish.
Last time we went through it, the trustees that were on the search committee were not trustees that were on the compensation. I don't know if we did that intentionally or not, but it was all different trustees between those two.
Because that, yeah, that was, it, it did, it did shift over.
Trustee Barry?
I've been sitting here patiently, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry?
I said, I've been sitting here patiently, I was the first one to raise my hand, and here we are fifteen minutes later.
I, I apologize.
The fact that it's an election year just boggles my mind what's that got to do with, you know, what you just shared with us. It's no secret that my good friend here, myself, are for reelection. I don't know if I should be offended or thankful, let me, I don't know if I should be offended or thankful that we're assuming that neither one of us is gonna come back, let me just, just, let me just made that point. That should have nothing to do with the process moving forward. Now, the committee that exists, I was asked to serve on that committee, but I had some strong feelings, I said, it's probably a good idea for me to step back and just pay attention to my colleagues, you know, that are serving on that committee. I would have loved, when I saw this on the agenda, made me very happy that we're gonna get to it right away, but we make decisions here, the seven of us make decisions in an open, public meeting. I would have loved a discussion, volunteers, you're just assuming that the three of my esteemed colleagues are gonna want to serve on that committee by you making their recommendation, unless you've had discussions with them, I don't know.
No, I haven't had any discussions.
I said, unless, unless, the words matter, unless you had a discussion with them, you're assuming that they will serve. I would have loved to, you know, to, this is not the first time we've done this, one of our, you know, veteran board members here, Bobby, will be the third time, I would have loved for us to come in here and open a meeting, our respect for this college, our respect for this community, college community, let's have a discussion, take some volunteers, you might just get two people to volunteer to want to serve on this committee, because it is time consuming, it's very taxing, then we go from there, just to come in here and...
I wasn't, I'm sorry, I just want to say something, I was not insisting, it was just a thought that I had, because that committee was already formed, and they started doing some work that was similar, and my concern is, I'm not assuming that anybody's gonna win or lose an election, my concern is that the work just has to be done from beginning to end. So, okay, since that, since my suggestion was not, did not go over well, it went over like a lead balloon, who would be interested in volunteering for this position?
You know what, for twelve years I've sat on this board, I've never, ever, ever interrupted somebody, so I, I'm kind of still talking.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, please, Trustee Barry.
Very frustrating, because, you know, when she start talking, you got these thoughts, they're rolling, it's very difficult, you got these masks on, trying to be respectful here, but then, you know, it's like, what was I saying? Where, where was I interrupted? You, you, you come in here, and you shared your thoughts, you should open up the floor for other people to give you their thoughts, then share your thoughts, not just come in here with a plan, and this is the reason, and save time. We, 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 we serve on two boards, that we, we, we have a balanced budget, it's almost a half a billion dollars, and board members come, board members go, and, life goes on, doesn't mean just because, you know, let's say I don't get reelected, like I said, I don't know if it's a burden, or, or whatever, but, doesn't mean that the process stops, I mean, when, when we sit down with Tom Wall, or John Sotowsky, and talk about the budget, and all of a sudden my term ends, or I decide to get off the board, whoever comes on just gets updated and moves on, that's not, that, that, that should have never been even brought up, that should not have even been brought up. I don't know, I was gonna make a point, and I lost it, so I'll just, I'll just step back a little bit.
My apologies, it was just a thought. Trustee Thorpe?
Again, back to one of the items from Trustee Moser, the only thing I believe that this committee does solely is the selection of the search firm. After that, we do come up as a whole board, we all decide how many people we want to appoint for the community, and I think actually last time it was like a fifty or sixty person group, so it definitely won't be those three bringing the final candidates back to the board either.
Thank you.
And, and then we're also kind of, again, sorry, but the mouthpiece between the board and the committee, so any, whoever trustees aren't on this can reach out to us at any point.
Right, with suggestions, and, and thoughts, and things like that, but the, the work that the committee does is crucial, but that does not exclude any member of the board from being part of the decision making process. Trustee Watts?
Trustee Thorpe, you had mentioned that there was a committee for compensation, so I guess I'm trying to understand in terms of how many committees, so a committee for compensation post the committee that selects her?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're really talking about then two...
Now, see, I wasn't aware of that.
So, we're talking about two committees then, so there's a committee to, that, I guess we need to then define what these committees are, what they're charged with the doing, right? I think that's where it is.
Yes.
Because it sounds like there's two committees, one for the search firm, and then one for the compensation, once the president has been identified?
Yeah, you're negotiating the contract.
Yeah, don't, don't say the search firm, just say the search.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
It's part of the search firm, and then the, the search that follows, and then it's handed off to the compensation. We, I think it was a choice that we didn't happen to have the same trustees on both of them, but...
Trustee Barry?
One time we did.
You were Chair of the search committee when we hired President Jensen, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you recall if there was a separate committee?
I was Chair of the board, not Chair of the committee.
Okay.
I appointed, I believe, Pamela Adams, or, yeah, I think it was...
I was on that committee too, as a brand new...
You, Pam, and...
I think that was it, you, Pam, and I.
On the, on the search committee?
On the search committee, I believe that was it.
No, I was Chair of the board that year, I don't know.
Trustee Petchikoff may remember.
Yeah, well, not for that, I was just off the board, I came back in when he was getting hired. One of the things, how it normally operates, is that somebody who was on the initial, I know, because Dr. Mead was on the search, and then he was on the contract committee as well, but then there was two other people, but we all raised our hands and said whether we wanted to be on it or not. I will let everybody know who isn't on the search ad hoc committee, those meetings are, we are allowed, I went and sat in.
You did, yes, you did.
Yeah, absolutely.
And observed what was going on, so that I, I could understand who all of the selections were, and, and read up, so you're not really excluded completely, you're just not part of the voting part of the search committee when, when that comes together.
Explain you're not part of the voting part.
Because when, then, when the search firm identifies and brings forward names of individuals, those people on the committee, not just the three board members, but all the people invited to be part of the community, vote, rank their choices, and you can sit there and observe that if you're not part of the committee who's doing the voting.
Of the three members.
Because I did do that, and I sat through all the interviews, too.
Right. However, I think by Michigan law, you're not allowed to engage in that discussion?
No, no.
Because if you would, yeah, if you would, then that would be a violation, because four, four board members are contemplating on college business.
Okay, well, let me start fresh, then. Who would be interested in serving on this committee?
Which one?
The...
Well, you did not answer the question about the two board members who are up for reelection, are they part of this nomination?
Yeah, absolutely.
This isn't nominations, this is asking for volunteers.
Right, asking for volunteers.
Right, but I'm saying she mentioned that in the beginning, so I want to make sure that our colleagues here are included, they can nominate themselves.
I think she was just making a suggestion.
I was making a suggestion, because my concern is that there may be a disruption in the process at a very important point, probably at the point where we have candidates coming and considering being interviewed, and to have a change or a disruption, that is a crucial time. That's my concern, I'm not negating that you have the right to be on the board, I'm not saying that you shouldn't.
On the committee.
That's just, I mean, on the committee, I'm sorry, that's just a concern that I have.
Yeah.
Now, if you don't think it's a legitimate concern...
I just don't see the connection, as Trustee Barry said, you know, sometimes you do want to pass the, the, what do they call it, the baton?
The baton.
The baton, that you, and you just, you know, some, it's one person out of how many people usually in that committee?
But those are standing committees, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm not talking about standing committee, I'm talking about search committees.
Yeah.
So, some trustees...
You can't get that person up to speed after a year's work.
Right, but you have one, you have, the board member, as we mentioned, we give it to the search committee, and the search committee does most of the work, but they do come back to the three trustees, and the, everybody who is involved, who was appointed to the search committee, from community members, which I'm hearing the number, membership is like fifty or, or under forty.
It was pretty sizable.
Yeah, so, and they have one equal vote to all of these forty in those discussions to narrow down the candidates from twenty to seven, to then three, who come and interview here, to all of us. I'm just saying that, you know...
And point taken.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it just, if, if I'm not part of this committee, or Trustee Di Ambrosio is not part of this committee, and he wants to be involved, he should have that opportunity, and even if he decides not to run, or decides he does not become victorious in November election, which I hope he, he still wants to run, and do both of them, but that's their decision to make, the, the work doesn't stop, the other, the new trustee who will be sworn in will be filled in, and will have, we don't have to refill that, because it's one out of forty, or possibly thirty, members of this committee, we don't have to reassign somebody else to, to take their position, they're just a member of an ad hoc committee, although the work that they might be doing is very crucial, but I don't think it's gonna stop, the show must go on. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, who is interested in serving on the search committee?
I'm, I'm very interested in this committee, I think I made that clear.
Okay. Everyone except Trustee Di Ambrosio.
And me.
And you, and, and I am not either...
You're welcome to.
I am not considering myself to be on the search committee, which I could be, and I could be Chair of that, I have some, some health issues, and some other things that I'm concerned about, that I would not be able to anticipate to the extent that is necessary, so that's why I'm pulling back.
Well, since an ad hoc committee, and Trustee Petchikoff, if I may, Trustee Petchikoff mentioned that it is in your powers to assign the ad hoc committee members, so I'd say the decision is yours, and I'll be gladly to support. Thank you.
Okay, well, I had hoped to get a new member, and I was thinking Trustee Watts would be good, she's got still five years left on her term, and as we move forward, some of the members of this board will no longer be on the board, so it's good to have newer members get that exposure. And you have not served on an ad hoc committee yet, have you?
Other than the one meeting that we had.
Okay, okay. Anyone else?
Well, everybody has done.
Well, everybody to your head.
No, I'm just wondering if there's any, any other concerns, any other thoughts? Trustee Barry? You did a marvelous job when you chaired the committee that I was on, you have a wealth of knowledge in this area, you've done this work before, you know how it needs to be done. I absolutely value your opinion, I value you as a teammate, and I value you as a friend. Please do not think that I was trying to diminish what you bring to this board, or question what you bring to, to anything that we, any of the work that we do, you are a very valuable member.
Thank you.
But I do just have concerns that... But I do just have concerns that the work has to be completed. Now, and I'm not, I'm not guessing that you, I'm not suggesting that you won't be reelected by any stretch. That was just a concern that I had. So, trustee Watts?
I do think that though, that there's value for those board members who've gone this, through this process before-
Absolutely.
-to be on the search committee.
Absolutely.
I don't know who, I don't know who was on those search committees before, but I think that intrinsic knowledge of the procedures may, I think that's going to benefit us.
And they will help impart knowledge to you, being on this, I mean, as far as how it's handled and what to do.
Yeah.
So, I agree. Now, trustee Petrikov, trustee Thorpe, and trustee Barry and I, I believe, are the ones that have served on these committees before, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Thorpe?
Is your intent for us to determine who will be on that committee tonight, or is this something that we'd want to be able to communicate one-on-one and have this decided in April, and in the meantime, we can instruct administration to start looking for just basic information on search firms, or reaching out to other groups, as President Cavalluna mentioned, in the meantime?
Yeah, I would highly recommend you go home and you think about how you want to proceed and put together and then email us, have a conversation with everybody and make, make the decision under less stress so that you give it a lot of thought.
Yeah. Oh, I have been giving it a lot of thought, but apparently my thoughts don't necessarily line up with others. But go ahead, trustee Watts.
I think it also would be helpful to know what the responsibilities are of the committees and what sort of time-
Time commitment.
Yes.
I think that would help us as well, because I think unless you've been through the process before, I think that would give us value as well, just knowing these are the responsibilities, this is how we would communicate, and this is what those sort of timeframes would look like, and how often would be-
And the time commitment is, is quite sizable.
And I think that would be helpful.
Right.
And, and just for my information, as to, to keep my nomination, or my recommendation, I guess, or my volunteer-
Your volunteer, yes.
As first, my book is, I'm locked nine to five, I'll be very transparent with everybody on the weekdays. So I want to ask, in the previous search committees, how many times was it where the whole committee was called to a meeting? Was it more often, was it after six, or after 5:30? The trustee Petrikov may help with this question, and trustee Barry.
Yeah, trustee Barry can reaffirm, or trustee Thorpe. One thing, the initial phase, when you're vetting to hire a search firm, you have to also interview them. So you have to find a time when they're available as well for the interviews, and that can be in the middle of the day, because they can be from out of state.
Right.
Because they're national search firms-
Yes.
And whatever, so you're-
And those are like one-hour commitments, two-hour commitments?
It depends.
Yeah.
It depends if you've tried to stack a few of them together, like just block off a half-day. I know that we did ours during the day because it worked for trustees Mead and Barry and I.
We did ours and I was on a bit.
But a lot of the people that are serving on these are maybe college presidents or trustees at other colleges, so they've also got their nine-to-fives.
And they want to do evening meetings.
Now, that, once we had that selected, everything was done in the evening, to my knowledge, except for when we did the interviews, those were all done, we blocked off the weekend. That was a whole Saturday and Sunday.
Great, great, yeah, that's, that sounds good. That aligns with my time, and I do have an hour lunch, but, and I can take some days off, but I, if it was sizable, I think this is very minimal, and I think I could do it. Thank you.
Okay. I agree. Now, where, what's the best way to get the information on what committees are needed and what is the work that has to be done? Would that be from the chair of the previous committees?
Does anybody have Becky Chadwick's phone number?
Do you? Okay.
I do.
So.
I could also, I mentioned, engage those associations and ask for either a presentation to you all or some literature on best practices regarding this kind of work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe we did have presentations at one point from the national, I can't remember who.
I don't recall either, because it's been quite a while since I served on one of those committees.
There's so much information from ACCT about new college searches and the best practices to do it, so I, I welcome President Cavalluna's suggestion into applying to that.
Okay. So then, are we agreed that we table this discussion until the next meeting, is that true?
I would suggest that.
Okay.
I concur as well.
Okay.
But we can't leave it for too long because-
Absolutely.
-we're going into a time when other people will be searching for administrative-
That's another concern of mine too.
So, you, you know policy well, trustee Petrikov, trustee, our chair McDonald can make that offline, it doesn't have to be in a public meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So she could call you, call me, or call whomever, and call trustee Watts, whomever the members are, and inform all of us, hey, I've selected those.
Yeah.
So you could do it even tomorrow after your-
An ad hoc committee's not a-
Yeah, it's not something, yeah. And then we can just-
A decision that affects-
That's a suggestion that I would also entertain to you.
And once again, I just hope that no one thinks that I was trying to be offensive or trying to exclude anyone from the process. I've been giving this a lot of thoughts, and those were the thoughts that came in my head that I shared with the group, and it was not by any means, I said, this is where we'll start the discussion with my thoughts, and then I'd like to hear your thoughts as well. So, you live and learn.
I, I think what, what chair McDonald was really trying to impart was the amount of time that was going to have to be invested in this, and to make sure that everybody is prepared to moving forward, that you will have to have, more than you had anticipated with a normal ad hoc committee, and maybe it came out a little clumsily, but, but that is what I believe was trying to be communicated, so that everybody knew what they would be committing to if they volunteered. But yes, by all means, ad hoc committees, anybody can volunteer for, it's up to the president to, to then select.
And it's not just the amount of time, but the length of time.
Right. The commitment's going to be up.
Okay, next item, please.
Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who have submitted a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. We had a blue card from Lindboza by Verricino.
Oh. Apologies for-
I'm sorry, President.
Okay, was that the only blue card?
That was the only one.
Okay. Next item?
Next special consideration of an action item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the action items below.
We need to pull item six, but not for discussion, just, we need to remove it.
Okay.
Do we need to pull 10? I don't know, I'm just asking.
Uh, 10 is-
The sale of land, or sale of-
Yeah, that should probably have an individual vote, so we'll-
I would like to, even, even if it's an individual, I want, I want a roll call vote.
Roll call vote for that one separately. Okay. So remove six, pull 10. Anyone else? Trustee Thorpe?
I just had one question on items one, two, four, and five, I do not need them pulled.
Okay.
And it's the same question on all four of them.
Go ahead.
I also have a question.
Wait, we haven't moved, I'm sorry.
No, I also have a question on number six.
Six is being polled.
Six is being polled.
Oh, six is being polled, okay, then.
Okay, so we have, six is being removed, 10 is going to have a roll call vote, and then, actually, we made the motion, trustee Thorpe has some questions on some of the other ones.
Okay, and I'll save this in the graphic, please.
Thank you.
Move to approve action items numbered one through five, seven through nine, as recommended in this agenda, except for six and 10.
Sounds correct.
We're pulling?
No, so you skipped them, and then you said exception.
I said one through five.
Yes.
No, here, here's how, here's how you read it. You go, one, you go one through nine with the exception of six.
I'm just giving you the one.
And pulling.
Wow.
All right. No, 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 it's also 10 is needs to be.
One through nine with the exception of six.
Yes.
And then we'll do 10.
That's all we're talking about right now.
All right, so move to approve action items one through 10, as recommended in this agenda, except for six.
So moved.
One through nine. I'm sorry, we're pulling 10, one through nine.
One through nine.
One through nine, okay. Move to approve action numbered one through nine, as recommended in this agenda, except for six.
Correct, so moved.
Support.
All right, trustee Barry?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, questions?
We have a question.
We have a, we have a motion by trustee Thorpe, a support by trustee Mosip, we have questions from trustee Thorpe.
I think that motion was by trustee Thorpe.
It was not by me.
Oh, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Trustee Barry.
Trustee Barry, supported by trustee Mosip.
You keep trying to give me credit for things that I haven't done, so, so when it, when it comes to items one, two, four, and five, it's the same question, we had only one bidder on each of these ones, and we, we hit this thing constantly, but it's so irritating that we put this thing out and nobody bids, and I'm wondering, is there something that we're not doing right, where most people don't even respond to us? And along this same line, do we need to, are we doing something wrong? Do we need to do something a little bit different? Do, do people really not want the business, or they just not qualified and we don't even know it? So I don't know that you can really answer that one right now, but-
I may have some answer, but probably I'll leave the administration to say something. But in technology, usually, trustee Thorpe, some brands have certain technologies that work with our processes, and that's where they suggest, that's why only one probably company that does the same expertise-
Meets the qualifications.
Yeah, they meet the qualifications. So for example, if you have an HP server, you may want to get the same brand that works with an HP server, those kinds of, I've seen that for two. So I kind of get that, and that's why I didn't question, I always question the single bidders, but the administration may have some other thoughts, I don't know.
Mr. Satkowski, should you or Mr. Steiner address these? Go ahead, Mr. Steiner, could you come up and stand at the podium?
I could give you the real thorough detailed explanation, but I'll probably give you just the quick highlights. In many cases where we get just one response, there could be several factors involved. Proprietary technology and increased specialization that we see in general in the economy has, has restricted the pool of bidders in a lot of, a lot of categories, particularly computer, hardware, and software. Many times, the first distributor who contacts the manufacturer about the purchase, about the product, will get the best discount. And other companies know this, and they might, they might ask, well, has anybody inquired yet? And with the economy the way it is, and we recognize the economic conditions that we face today, supply chain restrictions, lots of money in the economy, so lots of demand, but limited supply. Companies will chase after the customer that gives them the greatest profit, okay? Public institutions are that kind of customer. You know, we take low bid, and we cast a wide net in purchasing on, you know, all the, all the items that were questioned or asked about, we went to authorized dealers of those companies, because we don't want, well, we also put ads in the local Dearborn papers, which get picked up on the internet, and so I get inquiries from companies all over the country, and I say, well, for instance, for Lairdol items, you have to be an authorized Lairdol distributor. I never hear from the company again. You know, for, you know, HP items or the, you know, other items, you know, you need to have these kind of certifications, like the Cisco. You know, we want gold-certified distributors with certain specializations for customer service. Never hear from inquiries again. Increased specialization, the types of products that we're, we're asking for, more and more specialized, especially, you know, heavy on this agenda tonight, our career ed and technical programs. We have to match what industry is using. The defibrillators that we're using for the EMT paramedic program. Now, there's an example, one company, but they're the company that came up with this unique device, that, you know, we can have one unit that costs about $17,000 apiece, that does the work, that does the same instructional value of five separate defibrillator units that are currently used in EMT paramedic profession, that cost, well, I found a Zoll X defibrillator, a refurbished one, for $15,000 apiece. But now we've got one unit that gives us five different versions of defibrillators for, you know, $2,000 more. So, technology, supply, demand, manufacturer, distributor relationships, unfortunately leads us to a lot of these situations where you cast the net as wide as you can, but there's only one or two companies that, you know, can reasonably respond, given their limited resources and staffing that they have to respond to all these bids that come in.
All right, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's just more of a frustration, and I probably share it, that-
I'm right there with you, and it's been an issue ongoing, but thank you for your, your explanation, it made a lot of sense.
Yes, thanks.
Okay.
We haven't voted.
We have not voted yet, so. That's all the questions? May I have a roll call vote, please? And this is on one through nine with the exception of six.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes? Chairman Gav?
Yes.
Trustee Mc, or Chair McDonald?
Yes.
We need to vote for an extension according to the agenda.
Okay. May we have an extension vote? Or may we?
Move that the board would, meeting would be extended for 15 more minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee-
Support.
Trustee Mosip, supported by trustee Thorpe. Take a vote, please.
We'll call it trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Di Ambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes? Chairman Gav?
Yes. Next item? Let's back to 10.
Yep, so recommended action, move to approve going forward with the transfer sale of the SME South and SME West buildings from Henry Ford College to the Dearborn Public Schools for $2,125,000.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Thorpe, supported by trustee Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Discussion?
Discussion, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to know, obviously, John, Mr. John Satkowski here, and we have this chief negotiators. So I have some questions regarding how this amount, just to enlighten us how this amount came to be about, like, to just give us a summary. I know you've been in negotiating for a very long time, but can you share-
Sure, I can, I can-
Just some, things that you can share publicly?
Sure, in January, or in, in December, there was a discussion about the sale of the property between myself and, and Mr. Wall with regards to use of the property. So I had a, a valuation appraisal done by a firm here in the, in the metro, metro area. They reviewed both buildings, came up with a, an appraisal for each one of the buildings, the South building and the West building independently, and so, based on that price, that appraisal came through, public documented around $2.7 million is what it did.
2.7?
2.7. And then, Mr. Wall, they also had an appraisal done a few years back with relationship to And then, Mr. Wall, they also had an appraisal done a few years back with relationship to only one of the buildings, the west, the south building, and that was done by them at that time, to the tune of $800, $850,000 for the one building. So once our evaluation was done, once the appraisal was done, Tom and I talked about the appraisal, I gave the appraisal to him, he had it reviewed by the folks who did their original proposal, and we settled on, excuse me, Dr., President Cavalluna and Superintendent Malaco came up, almost splitting it down the middle, but it was toward, over the $2 million mark, more toward the college appraisal of $2,125,000.
And this is, Madam Chair, a question probably for John, since Mr. Sackowski has been here for a while. This is not the first time that we're doing properties, sale from the district to the college, correct?
Correct.
Can you give us just a quick history?
Was, there was a building, an elementary building that.
Dearborn Heights.
Yeah, how?
Now, the Michael Berry.
Michael Berry, and the Michael Berry was at.
Yeah, yeah. That was, Tom, were you here when we did that one? Or was that your process?
No.
Yeah.
And how much was the amount for that?
I think that was $800, $800, $900,000 for that building, from what I can recall.
I recall the discussions, somebody said, like, we gave one building for a dollar, like, just in exchange for, in exchange for something else.
Nothing.
Tom, has that happened?
Yeah, at that time, this goes way back, the building is a college unit, so we gave it for a dollar, but then the college renovated the building, and pulled out.
And then we bought it back for.
You bought it back.
I guess it's appreciated value.
Right, so, and the, when they did that for a dollar, it's because we were not using it?
Right.
Right, okay.
That's before my time, before Tom's.
Right, 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 the district was not using it, so they gave it to the college, the college renovated it, bought it back.
Any other questions? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
I just, before the roll call, I just don't have any questions for, of course, but I do have a comment. I mean, I wish that, I was thinking this would be a second reading, like, there would be a first reading, and then we would approve it next meeting, so we would have time to review what the chief negotiators have brought to us, so I thought that was the, or is this a sale of property?
Trustee Barry?
You can't have, unless you already make a decision on purchase or sale of property, you can't bring it forward in an open session.
Now you've already disclosed.
We were already disclosed.
Okay.
You can't go back, and we need to make a decision tonight, to see if up or down.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, the dollar figure's been disclosed now, so it's public knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, so that puts us in a bad situation if, yeah, that's just to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Barry. May I have a roll call vote?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dan Brodeur?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
No.
Trustee Peszekoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes? Trustee McDonald?
Yes. Next item, please.
You gotta go back to six, or no?
No.
Six was pulled off the agenda.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Acknowledgement, Board of Trustee Business, acknowledgements of course, on this.
Um, yes, we received invitation from some, I think we all got it. Next item?
Board committee reports.
No committees have met. Next item, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Yeah, it's gonna be our new president.
I already requested information about fees, I think that.
Yes.
Mr. Sackowski is gonna guess.
He took a note of it, I believe. Anyone else? Request for information? Next item, please.
Board member commentary?
Trustee Barry.
President Cavalluna, I wish I can go back an hour, I think it was like around 8:42, and I didn't choose my words wisely. It was nothing personal, I usually say that when I talk about realtors come and go, football players come and go, and if I would have thought about what I, you know, what I was about to say, if I said it, I would have chose different words, so I do apologize the way those words come off, I got nothing but the greatest respect for you, and I am very, very, very appreciative for your service the last, you know, four years, five years at this college. This college is important to us, and what you have done, many, many people before you were not able to accomplish. We have happy employees here, we have happy staff, and that's all credit to you, and that's very important to me, myself, and I'm sure it's important to rest of my college, so please accept my apology for choosing to use those words.
Well, trustee Barry, if, in the four years we've served together, you've only misspoken once, caught yourself lucky, because I do that about once every other day, you don't need to apologize, but.
Thank you for understanding.
It's, I gotta be honest with you, to the extent you feel like you do, I, no offense was taken, and I completely forgive you, and don't count it as a forgivable offense, something that should be requested.
Thank you.
Trustee Mosip?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Women History Month. I know, I do serve with amazing women on this board, and I thank them for that, while we disagree on some things, and we agree on many things, but I respect you, and I thank you for your service. Obviously, women are, want the reason why we're here, so thank you for what you do. I know you have busy lives, and you dedicate this to this college and to our district as double duty. I also want to thank all the women employees for their work as well, many of them are here, and truly, truly appreciate their work. Thank you.
Um, trustee Peszekoff?
I'll be real quick, this is directed towards Russ, because I haven't said anything yet, but four years ago, I was a no. And people who were here know what I'm referring to. Today, I'm a yes. And it is with bittersweet that I have to look at, I need to search again, and I'm a no on that as well. I just want to start out on the right foot, moving forward, so, thank you so much for having, taking the time to listen to me, and allowing me to understand you. I appreciate it.
I'd do it over again, I've always been a yes on you.
Okay, I would like to add one thing, we had the Women's Recognition Luncheon virtually on Friday.
Yeah.
For a virtual event that was just amazing, it went so well. Hats off was the theme, and hats off to everyone that was involved in making that event successful, and I have to give a hats off to President Cavalluna. He did not know that all the women, or the women that were working on the committee had planned on wearing hats, he's in his office virtually, and he ends up doing a somewhat of a monologue and changing hats from here to there, and it was wonderful.
Prom dues, huh?
So, yes, he did a really fabulous job, so.
I did not have hats at the meeting, so I didn't wear anything, so.
Kudos to everyone that worked on that, and I also just want to say.
I was.
Because, because the event was virtual, unfortunately, it did not receive as much support as they usually do, so I would like to encourage folks to go on to the hot, or to the foundation website and donate to Hot Strong Fund for that cause, it's a noble cause, our students do need it, and it helps students tremendously. So again, thank you, everyone that was involved. Anyone else? Next item, please.
Future meeting dates?
I'm an ex-official member, and I would just say a happy birthday to a certain trustee who during a day, in one day turned one year younger, and his fellow trustee mentioned he'd been on the year, on the board for, what did we say, many, many, many years, is that what he said to you today, trustee?
No, that's not what he said. That's not what he said.
All right, well, happy birthday, trustee Barry.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
I still owe you lunch. Next item, please.
Turned 35.
Future meeting dates, Wednesday, March 23, 2022, P-12 Board of Education Study Session, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, April 11, 2022, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, April 18, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Room and the Rosenau Boardroom.
And we are adjourned.